Thank you, Dean. Good evening, residents. Right, this is the Planning and Infrastructure Committee meeting, and apologies. Have we got any apologies to mention? I think we have apologies from councillor Wing.
Councillor Wing is away.
Yes, thank you. Are there any declarations of interest?
Yeah.
No? Okay, can we approve the minutes of the meeting of the Planning and Infrastructure Committee held on the 6th of March, please? Can somebody propose, proposed, proposed by councillor Dixie, seconded councillor Austin? Thank you. And can we vote on that, please? Does everyone?
All in the end.
Can I vote on that, yes?
Should be, sure.
Okay, we've got, would you like to read, councillor Tanclaw, would you like to read out the planning applications?
Okay, members, your first application is land at Vattenfall, Port of Ramsgate Royal Harbour Approach, direction of a fixed boat land platform. It's in the conservation area, it's been called in by councillor Austin for that reason. Thank you.
Councillor Austin?
This is actually a slight movement to a platform that is already agreed and approved.
Yes.
But we missed looking at it when it went to planning previously, and so I thought it was worth calling in just so we knew what was happening. I don't have any problem with it unless any other member does have, but I thought we should have a look at it.
No, I mean, I read through all the accompanying documentation, it's just a slight shift.
Just moving, and, and the new location, as I understand, will enable sharing with Martin and Ray.
Since, yes, it seemed an improvement.
I think it's fine, yeah.
Has anybody else got anything to say about this?
No.
Literally a few years.
I've proposed no comments, yeah.
It's only been moved a fairly small distance. Do you have? Do you second that?
Yep.
So no comment? And can we vote on that, Sister Hugh? Yes, thank you very much, it seemed unanimous.
Thank you, members. Next application is for a Broad Street, direction of a three-storey extension with roof terrace to facilitate the creation of two three-bed and one two-bed self-contained flats and one retail unit at ground floor level with new shop front on the Broad Street facade. This is called in by councillors Austin and Huxley. Reason for call in, potential overdevelopment, height of roof line exceeds that of existing buildings surrounding the site, shape of the roof line is not in keeping with existing buildings surrounding the site, potential reduction in light for residential properties adjacent to development and unsympathetic development in a conservation area. Thank you.
It's in councillor Huxley's ward. Councillor Huxley, would you like to speak to that?
I'm just, councillor Kristin, I'd like to see the owner, well, the person who runs the Magic Shop, which is at four. So in this, if this development went ahead, one of, some of her shop would be taken away, so she can't sort of function with a smaller shop. Obviously, that's not a planning condition, sort of point, but obviously that's going to cause her disruption. There are two, uh, two flats, one by the side, sort of the same, in the same development already, so they have tenants there, so that's going to cause them disruption. She was going to go away and talk to the landlord, to the owner of the site, who's bringing the application, to see what his plans are for it. I think her lease runs out in about two or three years, so she wasn't really sure what was going to happen, so she's very uncertain, she wants to keep her business open. That isn't a planning condition, obviously, for us to look at, but it's very disruptive.
Yes.
I think if you look at the sort of street scene, it is much higher than the proposed development there, the surrounding buildings, so it's all a bit of a mishmash round there. So it's a saying, so, it's quite a lot of flats. So we're really just responding to this resident who contacted us, and obviously she says it's going to affect her business. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Austin?
I think it's, I mean, I think the design is attractive and appropriate when you look at some of the other buildings in that street, and indeed those two very small shops are out of proportion with many of the other buildings, but this is taking me to the other extreme, this is much, much bigger and more imposing than the other buildings, and it feels to me like it, it's a good idea in principle to think about increasing the height and putting more dwellings in, and we need more dwellings in the town centre, et cetera, but this seems to have gone completely out of the top, and I think it's overdeveloped.
Anybody else, councillor Orban?
Chair, yeah, could I ask, if Dean could show us the, the current street scene on, can we Google it? The street scene, we can?
You've got the map, so that's the existing place you want.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then goes off.
I was just, you get a better?
Yeah, of course.
Unless there are other documents, has got photos, hasn't there?
Are they following the design guide?
They, they say they want to put a traditional shop front, and it does look like a traditional shop front from what you can see from a painting drawing.
So, Chair, can I just say?
Yes, sorry, go on.
The left of the Magic Shops and others of like a beauty salon or something, so that would go, I think, so it would be one shop front, I mean, two.
There we are.
So in some ways, that's probably better because it's in, this is a, a.
Best, yeah.
So what was the stage preference now, I think some.
Politicians or something.
That's right, the Magic Shops there, so this roof's getting a little bit messed up.
Yes.
This house is actually.
Can you go to the, just go back to the, yeah. Next, yeah, prentice is there. I mean, that's quite, that's quite high in comparison.
But I think if I'm.
Sorry, councillor.
I mean, it's gone one apart, hasn't it? Because I mean, I think if there's an infill, and it was definitely prettier than that, because that is not an attractive, attractive view, that whole road is attractive. And so I agree with councillor Austin, it's not a bad-looking building that they've proposed, and yet possibly a storey too high? And so, you know, on that, I'd prefer it if it was, if it was lower, because then it would be a really imposing building. They haven't just infilled that storey space, have they? They've, they've gone, gone with it.
Councillor Orban?
Yeah, I think, thank you for that, Dean. If we go back to the, the drawing. Oh, obviously, the, the flats are in the roof space. And whether that, that potential for that is that it looks bulkier because you've got those windows in, but I actually, I actually think it's nice design, I really.
Yeah.
I, I, I really don't see, as councillor Huxley's already said, you know, it's for the current occupant of the Magic Shops to resolve that with the owner and, or the leaseholder or whoever. We can't protect them on a planning application, you've got to deal with what you've got. And I actually think that, that that's not bad at all. I would support it myself, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Austin?
I just wanted to point out also, there is a document in the papers, correspondence with Jane Stratford in the waste team at TDC, saying that she's worried about that there need to be separate bin stores for the residential properties and the businesses, and she's not sure how they're going to manage that. So that doesn't appear to have been resolved from what I, what, just a couple of short emails. So I think there's a few concerns. I mean, I agree with councillor Orban, it's an attractive building, I just think it's very large.
Councillor Dixie?
I'd like to propose that, that, to be honest, we aren't against the, the design itself, it's particularly sympathetic to, to the architecture in Ramsgate, and yet I feel that might be one storey too high in terms of overdevelopment.
That's what you're proposing, yeah?
Yes.
Thank you, councillor Dixie. Does anyone want to second this? Yeah. Yes, councillor Austin?
And could we also say we hope that the matter about waste will be.
Yes.
Resolved, because we have so many problems with waste receptacles on the street.
Chair, sorry, just, just to answer councillor Austin's question, that the issues of commercial waste would automatically be dealt with, they need a licence from someone else to take their waste.
Of course. No, I think it was to do with the space within the.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, but that's, is that, I mean, oh, you've got a proposal.
Have a proposal. Could we vote on the proposal, please? Two.
I'm against.
You're against, you're against, yeah, against, right, okay.
So you've got two for, two against, you're the chair.
Oh, okay, well, I think it's actually one storey, two. Yes.
You, you, so that's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Third application is outline only. It's Flambo Eurobus Limited, Manston Road, outline application for the erection of 118 dwellings, including access, following demolition of existing buildings. Councillor Green has called this in, impacts overlooking neighbours.
Can I speak to it? The reason that I've come to it is because I've been approached by residents in Nethercourt, Windermere Avenue, who are concerned about their back gardens being overlooked by the properties. They are the other side of the railway line, and, and the plan, if you can believe it, is that they're going to plant a row of trees along the edges of the railway line, but we, we all know what happens to trees on a lot of these developments. So that's their concern, and, and that's why I, they asked me to speak to it. But this site, this is a huge site.
Yes.
And, and there are problems with the site, in that, in that the developers say they can't afford to provide any social housing, which I'm not sure, I mean, TDC officers will have to judge whether that's right or not. They did get permission earlier, I think, and, and they didn't develop it, and, I think in that one, they didn't offer any social housing.
Stop them fairies.
This site is, I mean, the nearest recreational sites to this site is, is the War Rec, desperately needing some DLC. So even if they can't afford to provide social housing, I would like to recommend that we, and that TDC get some planning gain for the War Rec.
Sorry, could you repeat that, councillor Green, get some planning?
Get some planning gain.
Yeah.
To improve the War Rec.
Right. Sorry, councillor Austin, do you want to speak to this?
I'll second that, but the councillor, he can't propose it.
I can't propose it, yeah. Yeah, no, I was just asking you to speak to it, yes.
But what councillor Green is suggesting is something that the council would wish to support. It's a brownfield site, we need housing, there's going to be a hell of a lot of housing all the way along there. I quite see the concerns of some of the residents of Nethercourt estate, and I do think the developers should encourage everything they can to, to shield the area, et cetera. I'm very cross that the developers constantly turn up, so they can't afford any, put in any affordable housing, I think it's disgraceful, and I think there ought to be much more opportunity for council planning committees to, to exercise their muscle in those matters. But if we are pushed into a corner where they can't for some reason, and, and the officers recommend that it should be accepted anyway, then I would be very keen to see some money going to the War Recreation Ground, which, as councillor Green has said, is a place where the tumbleweed rolls.
So councillor Orban, you want?
Yeah, I think, well, you've got to take into account, this is an outline application, so therefore, just go back to councillor Green's original comment, that the neighbours are concerned about, over, issues like that would be dealt with with the full application and not the outline, you're only getting the outline of the houses. And, and also, that would then take place for, that would then lead to mass, et cetera, as you said, a relation to trees, et cetera, et cetera. I, I think my main concern with this is where the traffic's going to go, when it comes out, 118 houses coming out onto Manchester Road, and it's better than it is. So, so that, that will be, that, that's a concern, maybe.
We have another look at the pictures, Dean.
All right. I'll give you a stand, Dean.
So we're on the Manston Road just before the roundabout, Tesco's?
Yes.
Literally just after the turn.
Yes.
The National Station's a massive site.
Yes.
And it's an ideal site, instead of building on.
On green.
Farm land.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
It's an ideal place, but the amount of properties that are already there, and with what's going on there.
As Meridian and right up to the.
At Hay Road. This, this will add an amazing amount of traffic to it, and that will knock on onto Newington Road, et cetera.
It's a fast road, isn't it?
And, and then down to St Lawrence, round of the Little Sinus Roundabout, because that's where, that's where the holdup is, is going to end up. So I think there are a number of concerns with that, and I, I'm not sure they will take into account the, the highway issues on an outline consent, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I, I think there are a number of issues here, but I think it's. Do you quite agree with that, councillor Green? If there was a previous application granted, then the, there should be no objection to properties being built there, but then it might come down to how many, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know whether this has been called into the Sandig District Council. I think perhaps that's what should be done.
I haven't done that yet.
Yeah, so maybe, but I, I certainly go along with the section 106 agreement concerning anything to go on the War Rec, and just to save on the affordable housing, Sandig District Council has lost a couple of appeals to the planning inspector, when the planning committee would not approve an application because there wasn't the right amount of affordable housing, and they were lost, and the council got cost against. So I think you need to be very careful with that, because there are government guidelines in relation to it.
It is more expensive to develop a brownfield site.
Yeah.
Councillor Dixie?
Thank you. I'm assuming some of these are flats as well as houses, and I just wondered, I know you said an outline application, so I don't know much about outline applications, right? And do they specify, you know, bedroom dimensions and everything that we have to comply to? That's what I thought, so that's, I answered that question, because I'm just thinking, well, if it is 118, and you have an, an outline application of 118, then they can go up to that, I'm assuming, therefore, and do their application, right? Okay, then.
If, if approved, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I, I was.
Sorry, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, clarified. Do we have a proposal on this?
If, Chair, sorry, if, if councillor Austin, I'll have to go along with what councillor Austin said, providing if we, if I could add, concerns about the, the traffic movements from the site onto the Manston Road and adjacent areas, and the, the, the cause.
Yeah.
Are you happy with that? Would you be happy to have that?
Yeah. Councillor Tanclaw has got it.
Mm-hmm. And can we, if somebody second councillor Austin's proposal, you seconding, thank you, councillor Orban. And can we take a vote on it, please? Thank you very much. That's been noted.
So, members, apologies, we omitted an application called in by councillor Green from the agenda, so we need, I need to ask you to propose and second a special motion with reference to a planning application called in by councillor Green but omitted from the agenda. The resolution, as per standing order 10A XV, to suspend a particular standing order unless it reflects mandatory statutory or legal requirements, committee resolves to suspend the following standing order in order for councillor Green's motion to be considered, and the standing order is 9B. No motion may be moved at a meeting unless it is on the agenda, and the mover has given written notice of its wording to the proper officer at least five clear days before the meeting. Clear days does not include the day of the notice or the day of the meeting, so if, Chair, if you could, I'm going to propose.
Yes, you have a proposal for that, thank you, councillor Orban, and seconded by councillor Makins, yes?
Thank you very much. And then we can now move on to councillor Green's call in, which was, is, sorry, 61 Ashburnham Road, erection of a single-storey rear extension following demolition of, of existing conservatory. Thank you, members.
Would you like to speak to this, councillor Green?
This is a mixed application, I think it's already built. The neighbours weren't insulted at all over the building of it, and they, they claim, and I've been to see it, say that it imposes on, on their, on the back of their house quite considerably, cutting down the lights to one of their windows, and they have a whole range of problems with how, how it's been built, which probably aren't planning considerations, they were building regs, regulations, I think. But anyway, the planning officer at TDC is going to go out and have a site visit. In the interim, I've called it in to TDC, pending what the planning officer at TDC tells me about the issues that the neighbour is concerned about. It's built right, right up to the site boundary. They reckon some of the rain, rain goods hang over their garden. It just seems to be not been built with, with the neighbour in mind, Tom.
Any consideration.
But whether a lot of the issues are planning issues, I don't know, the planning officer at TDC will no doubt tell me, but particularly the, the loss of light from, from the back of the neighbour's property needs to be looked at.
Councillor Orban, councillor Makins?
Councillor Makins.
First, I was going to ask you, is it permitted development, that?
Well, no, not if there's an application in, it's not.
Well, no, they may have put that case in.
Because they have built it, but, but as councillor Green has just said, part of that extension is overhanging the neighbour's property, so they would need to. Yeah, that's still part of that building, so if it's overhanging and in their airspace, then, then maybe itself might be a, be a reason. And what I was going to ask, Chair, is, if, can I ask you, if you notice, I haven't looked at this, because I couldn't, I just got it. Do we know how high?
I was just looking at that, it looks like it's 2.8 metres tall.
Behind.
Councillor Makins?
I can't quite see what that little bit on the end of it, extension. Is it an extension? No.
No, the middle bit.
It's just across the top.
A fence?
Yeah, that's the.
The fence.
That's it?
That's the fence, that's a roof light on top, is it?
Uh, yes.
Oh, I see, right.
Councillor Dixie?
Can I again ask, in my opinion, so with an extension, are you allowed to build up to your boundary wall?
Yeah, if it's, I mean, if, if.
If it's permitted.
Yeah, it could be extra on your land.
Okay, but this has an application for it, so therefore, do you think it is a permitted development?
Well, I would have thought so, because why have you put an application in, so I imagine.
I agree, yeah.
I can imagine that following the, the complaint from the, the resident, probably an enforcement officer's been out to have a, have a look.
Yeah.
Said, you need consent because it's over certain size or whatever.
Because I think, I mean, we have a lot of issues in the town centre, obviously, especially with, you know, conservation areas and stuff like that, where we are trying to stop anybody from doing whatever they like with regards to streetscape and everything, you know? And I think this is equally important, it's something that we get in, in the outer wards, where people are trying to do the right thing, and then, you know, somebody else is just like coming along and doing whatever they want. I think we ought to treat this, you know, with reverence in the sense that, I mean, if it, if it gets looked at, they've done all the right things, and that's fine, but if it has blocked that light, and if they are overhanging on, on to the neighbour's side, then quite frankly, that needs to be dealt with, doesn't it? And I think we have to consider that strongly.
Yeah, councillor Orban?
What you would do is to say, the neighbours, say, get your, get your stuff off my land, and the planning officers, if they, if it's refused for whatever reason, or even during negotiation, if you like, as normally you do, is to get rid of that, but of course, so if it's not overhanging, so the guttering's gone, then the wall is just going to run off straight into their garden without it going anywhere, so you have to, you know, those type of things have got to be born into mind, but that's, that's down to building control, not, not planning as to where your wall or stuff goes.
I, I understand that, but if it's, I mean, even if it's permitted development, and, and again, this might not be planning, I, I do appreciate that, but if you're not talking to your neighbour about it, they don't know, you, you've lost their light, you've got guttering hanging over the rest of it, these things need to be flagged up as to, sort of like, you can't just do what you like.
Yeah, yes.
Because I know, I know you have somebody in your ward that has problems with this, we have several where it's, it's not so big, you think, oh, well, it's not that high, well, it is if it's, if it's not being spoken about, and it is imposing, it's all so important, and it, it's important to, to have it looked at, and whether that's good in regulations or planning, whatever, that TDC, however they deal with it, it definitely needs to be dealt with, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Social behaviour, but anyway.
The problem in, in law is, is that you don't have to tell your neighbour unless it's under the party wall out.
Yes.
This appears to be party wall out, which is not, it's not a planning consideration, so they should have notified their neighbour, and anyone with any reasonfulness would have said, look here, Fred.
I'm going, I want to build something, exactly.
This is our eyes, and we, what, what do you think?
Yeah.
But then they don't need to take any notice of what the neighbour says, so this is, this is the difficulty when you're getting in, in difficulty with problems, but I think if councillor Green's called.
Yes.
Called it in, then I think we just need to make, if, if I might make.
Will you make us a proposal?
Proposal that we object on the grounds of imposition on the neighbours.
So it's just the guttering?
Loss, loss of light.
Loss of light.
Well, if it's party wall, and it's loss of light, and it's guttering, it's not just the guttering back.
No, 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 what I'm saying, that in planning terms, it's, it's whether, it's whether you're on someone else's land, and you haven't served notice on them, because it's on their land, because you can spot, you know, if you make an application, come and build an house in the back of your garden, come. But, not that wood, because, shot. But, but I, I think it's, I'm just slightly surprised on its size and its height as to, by consensually required, but.
Yes.
Normally it wouldn't, wouldn't be, but, hey, you know, it is, so let's go on the side with the neighbour for now, then.
So what are we going to propose here, then? What would we like to?
I propose that we, we object on the, on the grounds that.
Imposition on the neighbours.
That's not a planning issue.
No, no, but we could say on the loss of light.
Okay.
The neighbour's property.
And what about the guttering issue?
No, I wouldn't, I, I, I wouldn't say that as a, as a small issue, I wouldn't say that. No, I wouldn't, I, I, I wouldn't say that as a, as a small issue, I wouldn't say that.
Okay, um, anybody second that? Thank you, councillor Nixie. Um, can we vote on that?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is it. The date of the next meeting is Wednesday, the 8th, May, 7pm. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.